And on September 4th, 2019, executive session was held to discuss real estate and litigation.
Approval of minutes, motion please.
Don't move, Your Honor.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Rhea?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Invitation, do we have anybody signed up?
No one has signed in, Your Honor.
Communications? Don't have any?
None, nope.
Okay, managers report, Andy.
Good evening, counsel, I'll just have a long list, but no particular order of various updates. Counsel, you're aware that we've been talking about a visit, an upcoming visit next week of Denis Keva, who's the city manager of FEEM, and will be accompanied by Christian Lepi, who is an international sculptor, who did the statues that were unveiled in FEEM last year, a year ago, when the delegation from Meadville was there for the FEEM memorial. We'll spend a couple of days with Christian Lepi. He is presenting a lecture at Allegheny College on Monday, the 23rd, at 7:00 PM at the Dome Gallery of Art in the campus center. It's a public lecture, folks are invited to attend to learn more about his work. We'll be doing various tours with both Christian and his wife and Denis. Meetings, lunches, we arranged today some industry tours. The mayor made some phone calls on that, so we've got a full week early next week. And counsel, we'll provide you a schedule because we have some events that we'll be inviting you to as well. Scrambling to pull it all together. Tomorrow morning, Mayor Sterns and I are meeting with the president of Edinburgh University, just as a sort of get-to-know-you visit, Dennis Frampton has arranged that, so we'll be doing that tomorrow. We're getting into budget season here. Just earlier this week, Debbie sent to department heads the, so the preparation documents, requests for revenue expenses from department heads. Probably by the October 2nd meeting, then we'll have the series of dates planned out of, that we'll share with counsel. We'll put that out in notes to counsel, the various budget meeting dates that we have as part of the budget preparation schedule, so look for those forthcoming.
Andy, I'm gonna interrupt you real quick on that. Can we set the, the meetings that we have for the budget, are, can we set them at a later time, starting at 4:30 instead of 4:00?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Is that okay?
Yeah, we haven't advertised them or anything yet, so.
That's why I wanted to catch you.
We'll be prepared to, so when we, we'll discuss the dates at the next meeting, and we can review those with counsel and finalize the times, but I don't see why.
That would be very helpful for me if we could do them at 4:30 instead of quarter after 4:00.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll review those.
Okay, thank you.
At the next meeting. So at our upcoming October 2nd meeting, we've invited, we're asking John McShane to come. John McShane is our counsel, our financial advisor for our debt and bonds. The opportunity exists now to refund the 2010 pension bonds and the 2014 ABC, A, B, and C series bonds. John's gonna present that information to us. The bond market is very favorable right now, and we'll look at some possible savings that we could in refunding that could be helpful in reducing our debt service going forward, just given what we hope will be the lasting conditions of the bond market for the next few months, probably looking to lock in rates for October, sorry, November. But he'll do a presentation of what he thinks those opportunities are. So at the same time, where we think we could recognize some savings, Frank Canadico from Cowton Associates is our pension actuary, and he's the one that helps calculate what our minimum municipal obligation is, our MMO. We're expecting, though, based on some factors beyond our control, which are changes in mortality tables in the actuary world and regulations that have adopted these new mortality tables, the market losses, and some other factors, we expect our minimum municipal obligation to rise somewhat significantly as well. So we're, we're gonna bring this information back to counsel. We'll start with a presentation by John McShane, though, at the next meeting. Our 2018 financial audit is nearly complete. Most of the number crunching is done. We're working now at a staff level in the management discussion and analysis, and we have a plan that the audit would be presented at the October 16th meeting, that Clint Mattern would be in front of counsel to present the 2018 audit. This past Thursday, the Shade Tree Commission and members of the Beautification Committee took a bus tour, I think Mayor, you participated, is that right, you and Nancy did?
Nancy and I both did, yeah.
Just a drive around town, looking at opportunities for shade trees, parks, et cetera, some collaboration opportunities with the Shade Tree and Commission and the Beautification Committee. Councilman Don, you participated. Last Saturday was the French Creek Council of Governments Tire Recycling Event at Fairgrounds. That was held from 8:00 to noon, and we collected about 1,200 tires. It took us that whole stretch of time, we were open the whole time, so we, we may reduce the frequency of that, and we've been doing it every two years now for, gosh, this is probably for, fourth time?
Three of them.
Yeah. So anyway, it was a successful event. Busy morning.
Thanks, Sean, for working on that.
And I, this Friday evening, beginning Friday evening, is the Vietnam Post 52 holds the annual vigil, the prisoner of war missing in action vigil in Diamond Park. That begins officially at 6:00 PM on Fridays, 24-hour vigil that lasts for 6:00 PM on Saturday, takes place here in Diamond Park. And then the Ride for Freedom, the motorcycle ride, is on Saturday, it comes into town. And lastly, I think, then, we've established, so if you would save the date, we can get an email out to you for Friday, October 11th. We had talked, I think, at the last meeting about a ribbon cutting for HP Way Park. And we've established at a staff level, October 11th, proposing 6:00 PM for a ribbon cutting ceremony in the park that evening, if you would save the date for that. And I think that's all I have, Your Honor.
Any questions for Andy?
I have a couple of questions. Andy, you and I had talked the Footbridge, Porter Street Footbridge. Some people are asking about the status of it, and there has been some concern raised about the condition of the, quote, "new gutters" on Allegheny Street in Leuven.
I'll take the second one first. So the, I informed counsel at the last meeting, so the, the PennDOT-funded, the federally funded via PennDOT funding, the local federal route funding, frankly, the bureaucracy does not allow them to complete those streets this year. They'll be done early in the season, and we expect them to go to bid late this fall, but for paving next year at this point. So we'll replace curbs on Allegheny Street in particular, Limber, some here in Diamond Park, various places that were part of that, fund, paving to be funded with those dollars. Long story short, that's not happening, and as Councilman Roa suggested now, in several places, particularly along Allegheny Street, between where, where you had to solidify the street and dig to establish the curb, in some places there's cold patch, in some places it's better than others, there's still gravel locations. That will need to be completely buttoned up with either cold patch or hot patch asphalt paving for the winter, we intend to do that. And Public Works actually met with Lindy Paving, who was the contractor, because there are specifications in the contract for them to button up better. So there will be, there will be more work to do, so before going into winter, we should expect those curb lines to at least be paved in.
Wonderful.
They might, they won't be pretty, they won't be the final paving job, but it'll be to get us through the winter, to get us to spring paving is the goal. So it definitely is on our radar screen. And Gary, with respect to the Porter Street Footbridge project, could you give us the latest there?
Sure, that, really nothing's really changed with that. We're still finishing up design, bidding will be late fall, winter at this point, with construction again to begin the spring.
Also been another challenging, when the, when the federal funds are used, it's a, it triggers a lot more requirements and reviews, and unfortunately takes a very long time to work through, but we're confident at this point we're gonna meet a spring construction schedule.
When that we do the design and let out the bids, is there any way of assuring ourselves that we have northern engineers who understand salt? And the effect that it has on bridges?
Ashley Porter is, is on the design.
Oh, Ashley's gonna do it?
Yeah.
Good.
And the, the main bridge superstructure will remain. There's lots of crossmembers that get replaced, the decking will be different. So there's, there'll be some design changes that would reflect a better winter condition scenario. Anything else, counsel or Your Honor?
Nancy, you have anything for Andy?
No, no.
Guys, all right. Okay, thank you, Andy, for the report. Let's go to old business, we have an ordinance, a third and final reading, commending the traffic code.
A third and final reading of ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, to amend the traffic code specifically Article 503 to establish permanent street closures.
Motion, please.
Don't move, Your Honor.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Andy?
So counsel, just by way of reminder, this is the third and final reading. We've had first and second at the prior meeting, and, and discussion leading up to this. This is for the proposed closure, but not vacation of right of way, so that the street closure of Dodie Avenue between North Main Street and Lair. And that was the stormwater call or failure, condition of the road, dangerous intersection discussion that we've had, and this is a result of action of a falling on the heels of neighborhood survey recommendation by the Planning Commission. And this just brings us to the third and final reading.
We did amend this slightly, counsel, to clarify that we were only closing the street, not vacating it?
That was part of your first and second reading.
Was it?
We had, we had, we amended it prior to first and second.
Any other questions from counsel? Roll call.
Rhea?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
We have an ordinance, a third and final reading of the Transit Retail Code.
Third and final reading and ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, to rescind and reenact Article 313, peddlers, hucksters, and solicitors of the Meadville Municipal Code of the city of Meadville, to rename the article Solicitors and Transient Retailers to incorporate other changes to such code and to repeal Article 317, transient retail merchants.
Motion, please.
Don't move.
Second?
There you go.
Andy?
Again, counsel, this is third and final reading. We've discussed drafts of this at multiple meetings leading up to this. The overall goal, overall goal is to simplify what had been our sort of reference here, various definitions related to transit retail, hucksters, peddlers, hawkers, manufacturers, agents, trying to simplify that code, bring it into sort of more current times to regulate mobile food units. This is about the best summary I can provide for you at this point, where we're at.
Any questions? Roll call.
Rhea?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. See, resolution adopting the Transit Retail Fee Schedule.
Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that whereas ordinance number 3777 of 2019, an ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, to rescind and reenact Article 313, Peddlers, Hucksters, and Solicitors of the Meadville Municipal Code to rename the article Solicitors and Transient Retailers to incorporate other changes to such code and to repeal Article 317, transient retail merchants, was passed and enacted on September 18th, 2019. And whereas the ordinance pursuant to Article 313.7 references application and permit fees, and whereas the city council of the city of Meadville desires that the new fees will be effective upon the effective date of the ordinance, now therefore be, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Meadville, by and through the council of the city of Meadville, that pursuant to ordinance number 3777 of 2019, does hereby approve the amendments listed below to the fee schedule of the city of Meadville, in addition to any other fees adopted and imposed by any motion, resolution, or ordinance of council.
Thank you. Motion, please.
Don't move, Your Honor.
Second? Second. Andy?
So counsel, these are, these fees reflect, we've discussed these, I believe, at the last meeting or prior meetings, and again at the last meeting, where we discuss the relevant fees for applications for both soliciting and transient retailers. Fees include, for transient retail fees, it would include electric, or fees without electric, where they might set up on the street in a food truck instance, and you will see them all listed here. These do reflect the reduced, we, the earlier draft we provided, discussed at the last meeting, we had reduced the annual fee schedule on some of these. Or the annual fee.
Any questions for Andy?
What, what did that go to?
What did they go?
What is the fee now? What did we reduce it to?
So that's, so the application to, I'll just go down the fees here. So the application for, for a permit is $20 for both solicitors and the transient retailers. The background check fee is $20. The soliciting permit fee is $10 per day, $25 per week, $100 per month, $500 per year. The transient retail permit fee with electric, $40 per day, $500 per year. And the transient retail permit fee without electric, $20 per year, per, per day, excuse me, $300 per year.
$300?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
These reflect the discussion following last meeting.
So we increased the daily rate and compressed them a little bit?
Yes.
If I recall correctly.
Katie, do you recall from the initial?
So based on?
Last meeting.
The last meeting, we increased the daily fee for the solicitors to $10 from $5, and we decreased the annual fee for transient retailers from $750 to $500, and from $500 to $300.
Yeah, I have two sheets of paper, one's a resolution and one is the very same thing.
That, that is what we keep with the?
With the ordinance.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions, Nancy?
No.
Roll call.
Rhea? Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Under new business resolution approving Ray Street Lumber Company subdivision.
Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that whereas in accordance with provision of Section 1359.02 of Article 1359, the land subdivision regulations of the Meadville Municipal Code, the final plat for Ray Street Lumber Company Incorporated, minor subdivision submitted to the city as prepared by David Laird Associates, registered surveyor being a portion of assessment is hereby one, approved, and two, approved for recording. No public improvements guarantee is required because there are no public improvements planned or required by the said land subdivision regulations.
Motion, please.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Andy?
Gary?
Or Gary?
This is a subdivision, and of course, this just died, so. In your packet and on the screen behind you, this, this involves a parcel that was bisected by the Spring Street Extension Project back in the late 90s.
That's the Spring Street there.
Spring Street there, Ray Street Lumber buildings are immediately north of that. You'll see the line right under the arrow there, that is the northern side of the total parcel, which then extends across Spring Street all the way to French Creek. It's that large parcel there that Katie read all the lot numbers out for. Essentially what it's doing is it's subdividing the 21.6 acres south of Spring Street, off of the parent acre, which will remain, 2.5 acre remainder, which will remain with the buildings proper. The area south will then be conveyed to the French Creek Conservancy. It will remain undeveloped. The northern portion will remain with the parent parcels and be essentially, if it's ever sold, conveyed with those parcels there. Beats all the requirements of the subdivision land development ordinance. The zoning ordinance has gone through both county and city planning commission approval, or recommendations for approval, almost before counsel today.
Gary, is there any value to reviewing the plat files that?
Much, yeah, I mean, the plat up on, up on the screen behind you shows specifically just the parcel to be subdivided, and it does reflect the fact that there is a portion of, a small parcel that, that was part of the Spring Street Extension owned by PennDOT in the northwest corner there, that, right just to the left of the arrow.
That's here.
Yes. But the remainder of that is French Creek, it will be subdivided off.
So essentially, this?
All the way to French Creek.
All the way to French Creek becomes the parcel that's being subdivided off the parent parcel, which is north of Spring Street.
Yeah, and that's being given to the Conservancy?
Sold.
Sold.
Like, yeah, Conservancy has reached an agreement with Ray Street Lumber and the Marses family to acquire it.
But this has nothing to do with across the street where the buildings are, I mean?
It's being subdivided from that parcel, the Conservancy is purchasing the parcel described here closest to the creek.
Okay. So that land's still developed, I mean, still under the family?
North of Spring Street, correct.
Okay.
Is that with the hopes that the, that the Ray Street Lumber can sell their property easier, or?
That's the thought among the, among the family, yes.
The Conservancy, of course, is interested in the conservation value of this parcel, which is, which is active flood plain and is, you know, very good riparian area for a French Creek.
And that already ties into what the Conservancy has at the point, correct?
Uh, they actually own, yeah, this parcel to the west and all the way to the, which is the, if that wouldn't go here, it can go to the?
This down to the point.
Yeah, they own these various parcels here, they're, the parcel lines are pretty messy, but essentially they own all of this here that goes down to the point already.
Where, where's the point?
Where Casalago Creek.
Oh, oh, they need.
So at this point, the Conservancy already owns these parcels, and that would be acquiring, once it repopulates and things here, but this property that was Ray Street Lumber owned.
Where's the confluence of the two creeks with relation to downtown?
Just upstream from Mead Avenue Bridge. So if you, here's the Mead Avenue Bridge, this, these are old, well, that's?
It's old imagery.
It is old imagery, but yeah, it's literally just right upstream here, you can see right here where the?
White pine piles.
This isn't a given, that's right.
Yeah, so this is linked and recycled.
Does a lot of water flow through there, I'm just curious? I mean, you're in the Conservancy.
Casalago Creek?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a great, I mean, great biodiversity, fishery.
It floods, that's where it floods from. French Creek doesn't flood, it's the one up next to it, and that land, there's a big lot across from the tool shop.
Right.
And that filled up with water one year, and I mean, we watched it, and then it emptied. And it took a month or two months, six weeks, and the fish were left. And the kids were out there fishing, in the fish, catching fish in that big lot as it slowly disappeared. It was neat.
Yeah, Casalago's a neat stream.
Okay.
Any questions for Andy? Gary, I'm sorry, for Gary?
Counsel, I'm not voting on this, nor have been involved, but I will disclose I'm the chairman of the board of the French Creek Valley Conservancy.
Thanks. No other questions, roll call.
Rhea?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Be resolution adopting a delinquents' stormwater management fee collection policy.
Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that whereas ordinance number 3707 of 2012, an ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, implemented a stormwater management user fee to defray costs associated with the operation and maintenance of the city of Meadville's extensive stormwater infrastructure, and whereas the ordinance pursuant to Article 965.11 references unpaid user fees constituting a lien on the property, and whereas the city council of the city of Meadville desires to begin active collection of delinquent balances for program years 2013 to 2018, and for collection via municipal lien, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Meadville, the attached delinquent stormwater management fee collection policy for program years 2013 to 2018, is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached hereto, as and for finding an effective policy of the city of Meadville in accord with its terms.
Motion? Second?
I'll second.
Counsel, a lot of the context is there in the language, the whereas language that Katie just read. So this is us now, that as the program has gone on, when the, the ordinance was passed as reference in 2012, begin billing in 2013, the ordinance does contain a provision for delinquent collections to be lien under the Municipal Claims Act. And we've not done that yet, and as the program goes on, though, delinquencies are increasing, and so at this point, we need to begin enforcement of that. Counsel had directed me and staff to prepare a, a policy, though, that would allow delinquent balances some periods of time to, to catch up, and that's what this lays out there. We would send notices, Gary's prepared notices, to all the delinquent accounts, and we would provide, counsel, in less than $500, up to three months, and three installments, with the first payment to be received by October 31st, the third and final to be received by December 31st, under this proposed policy, accounts owing between $501 and $2,000. Have an option of up to six equal installments. Again, first payment by October 31st, final by March 31st, 2020. And there's only a handful of accounts owing $2,000 or more, but they would be subject to a negotiated approval with the city treasurer for a payment plan. And anyone that doesn't either pay in full or establish an approved payment plan would be subject to leaning by following October 31st.
I have questions for Andy.
Are we proposing to charge interest on the ones that have longer term?
We have not established that in this policy.
Is there a provision, or does there need to be a provision, like an acceleration clause? In other words, if someone says, yes, I'm gonna pay, they make one payment, and then they default, would we accelerate, say, okay, now the balance is due, and we start the lien procedure?
We've discussed that administratively, how best to handle that internally, and that, so say you're in a three-month payment plan, you make your, as you just described, you make your first payment, but you don't, you miss the second one, and then upon missing the second one, would we initiate leaning? Is that, that's your question?
Chase the?
Yeah. Given the short, the relatively short payment plan, the payment plans and the volume of them, we would probably wait until the final December 31st deadline, just administratively, for staff to, to do that. They would, I guess they would technically be in, could be considered a default once they missed their second payment, but we think administratively?
Yeah, were you talking about the ones that owe the, the larger accounts, or were you?
I'm making, I'm about any of them. In other words, if someone owes a certain amount of money, $500?
Yeah, yeah, I get, I get what you're saying, but I could, I would, I agree with your acceleration method for especially those that owe that money. I mean, if, if they make a payment plan and they owe $10,000, and they miss the first and second, or second payment, we, you need to leave them as soon as possible, especially the large ones.
To, to further expand on what Andy was indicating, this does provide for that. That's the intention of the last sentence, where if delinquent accounts are not paid in full or established and fulfilled their payment plans, we can initiate further collection processes. So it allows for it. Administratively, it's gonna be a challenge for staff with this payment plan, on all fronts, actually, because they're gonna be tracking money. So I'll, I'll defer to the city telling me they've defaulted under their payment plan, follow.
But I guess you're right, as Gary points out in the language in the final paragraph, that they haven't fulfilled their payment plan, then we could initiate upon failure.
Any other questions? Any questions, Nancy?
No, I think, I think they answered.
Okay, Jim? Roll call.
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing a submission of grant application.
Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville, that whereas the office of the state fire commissioner has established an annual state grant program that provides funding for fire companies and emergency medical services, and whereas the city desires to complete and submit an application in the amount of $25,000 to the, the fire company and emergency medical services grant program, and now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Meadville, that the appropriate city staff are hereby authorized to submit the application to off, the office of the state fire commissioner for the fire company and emergency medical services grant program in the amount of $25,000, and directed to take all action and to execute any and all appropriate documents associated with the grant application.
Motion to authorize submission.
Don't move, your honor.
Second?
Second.
Uh, Council, there's a basic description in your packet, this is actually a funding source that we've applied on the fire side, applied to annually, have been successful in procuring funds, and you might recall, gosh, probably six months ago or more, I had reported that we had changed, on the emergency medical services side, we changed our licensing from quick, quick QRS, Quick Response Service, to a rescue squad, which is a different licensing provision of the Department of Health, which now makes us eligible to apply for the EMS service grant as well, so well, that's a new funding source, so it's the EMS side, so we're looking at $15,000 application on the fire services side and a $10,000 application for EMS-related equipment.
Any questions for Andy? Harry, now roll call.
Rea?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
I'll just say, I, I thank the fire department staff, so Jill's staff, Pawn's staff, is, really takes lead on writing these applications and submitting them, and it was Chief Hasko that, by participation at the state fire chiefs meeting, learned that we were, appear to be missing out on a grant funding opportunity, and investigated the licensure and made those changes, so I thank them for their efforts.
Andy, anything else you have?
No, your honor, I will note after council member statements, I'd like to have an executive session with council for personnel, personnel, real estate, and litigation.
All three. Okay. Okay. Council member statement, Jim, I'll start with you this evening.
I have nothing this evening.
Nancy, would you, council member statement?
I have none.
Okay.
Uh, the, on Friday of this week, there was a vigil for POWs and missing in action soldiers, it's probably gonna be a nice night, if you, if you're downtown, you might wanna stop over there.
Sean?
Uh, I have a few things, uh, last Saturday was the tire collections, and Andy referred to it, and I just would like to thank, uh, the Meadville football team came and helped us unload tires, and they laced them in the back of the semi truck, and so did Crawford County's juvenile probation, and some of the, the kids did a really good job, and I just wanna thank all of them. Uh, it was a little slow, I don't know if we're getting all the tires, or we don't get the word out well enough, uh, we do it every two years right now, I don't know, we might have to back that off a little bit, because it doesn't seem to be getting the tires as much more. Afterwards, I went to the wine and brew walk, it was a really busy day for me, and that is a lot of fun, uh, if you've ever gone, I think it's like $30, buy a ticket in advance, and they, all the stores downtown have like a brewery or a winery, and the other one that, the mayor would really like is they have moonshine, and, and, but, uh, they'll let you keep trying, so it's, it's a lot of fun, it's an interesting thing, I don't know how they get so lucky, but they've had really good weather every year, I think it's the third year, fourth year, I don't know. Uh, and then later that night, Journey had, or that afternoon, Journey Brown for Penn State had a 90-yard run, and, uh, I don't think he realized that he's the fastest guy on the field, and he's holding up for his blocks or something, and they caught him, because he could've run right by them, looked like little gritters, and they're out there running with them against Pitt, so it was great to see him do that, and then he got hurt, I don't know what the story is on that, I'm not too excited about that, but it was a lot of fun. Uh, Meadville's football team's playing really well, they are on the road this weekend at Warren, I don't know when they're home again, but they're three and one, it's kind of revenge season over last year's winless season, and then this Saturday, Allegheny is having free admission for its community day at college, and if you haven't been to an Allegheny game, which I haven't been in a long time, I was playing on a dawn.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanna share with council, I received a couple phone calls from residents on Highland Avenue that I shared with Andy and staff, they really appreciated council blacktopping Highland Avenue, they said that it's made the neighborhood a little bit more quieter, and they felt a lot more safer, so on both ends of that, you have people that wanna keep the brick, and you have individuals that want to blacktop, but I just wanted to share with you, and Andy, I think we actually put a speed limit sign up, you wanna kind of?
Uh, yeah, we, yeah, it's a radar control, just a speed control sign that notifies you what your speed is approaching, we did deploy it on Highland, on an upper section of Highland, two weeks ago, then we moved it to upper, to upper Chestnut Street, it moved to lower Highland, so on lower Highland again?
Does that thing give you any feedback?
It, a lot, it collects a lot of data, I'll, I'll share, I'll share the upper Highland data, that's all, I, actually I have the Chestnut Street data too, I'll share it with you, um, accounts, total vehicles, vehicles in, in which speed range they're traveling, and so, you're pressing my memory, John, but in the Highland trial, which was just two or three days in the upper Highland, over, I think it was 76% of vehicles were going under 32 miles per hour, 25 is the speed limit, it was interesting, so it does allow us to collect a lot of data.
Yeah, it's cool.
I'll share that out with you, because it's an interesting report, and we had a concern today from another resident on Ben Avon Street, and I told the chief, let's move it to Ben Avon next week, so, it's, it's also, it does regulate people's behavior when they see what they're doing, and?
Yeah, realize how fast they're going.
It's a good notice, yeah.
Especially on Highland, that, that street is really, really nice.
It is.
A lot of people, both ways, it's interesting that you always said that, because I've had both ways people tell me they want to break.
I just wanna share with you on that sign, not that I would ever break the speed limit, but if you do go over the speed limit, it's got a little sad picture that comes up.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, I told Andy we need to change that to red, instead of the, uh, doing that. And then the other thing, I wanna thank council members and, and the residents of the city, over my last illness, all the cards and the phone calls and the visits to the hospital, I certainly appreciate that, and things will get back on the right track, so. With that, I don't think we have anything else, I'm gonna call for a juror.
To executive session.
So.
Second, your honor.
Second? Roll call.
Rea?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.